Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening again, and we're delighted to have everyone here with us tonight. Interpretation services are available this evening in Spanish. Will the Spanish interpreter please raise your hand and introduce yourself? Thank you. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV, Comcast Channel 24, RCN Channel 13, and FiOS Channel 19...excuse me, 1962. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. If anyone wishes to sign up for public comment, please see our school committee staff, Ms. Lena Parvex, in the hallway. Sign up for public comment will close at 6:30 PM. First, we'll begin with the approval of minutes. If the minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made immediately...available immediately in the hallway with other handouts. If changes are made, you can access those minutes tomorrow on the BPS website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February 7, 2018, school committee meeting as presented. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, and a second from Mr. O'Neil. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Okay, well, with this great group tonight, we're proud to honor some very talented and dedicated teachers who have earned their National Board certifications over the past year. At this time, I'd like to invite my colleagues on the committee and Superintendent Chang to join me on the floor for the presentation of citations.
Okay, well, hello. Unfortunately, the president of the Boston Teachers Union, Jessica Tang, could not be with us here this evening. She usually joins us to present the pins for the National Board certification on a yearly basis, but there's a annual...excuse me, a regular membership meeting of the union tonight. She sends her regrets and her congratulations. National Board certified teachers are highly accomplished educators, as we all know, and who meet high and rigorous standards, like board certified doctors and accountants and lawyers. Teachers who achieve National Board certification have honed their skills throughout intensive study, expert evaluation, self-assessment, and peer review. It's quite an accomplishment, as we all know, and we are grateful for them for raising the level of excellence in our school. Tonight, we celebrate seventeen teachers who have recently earned or renewed their certification. And as I mentioned earlier, we also have pins for you. When I call your name, please step forward to collect your citation and pin, and then stick around, please, for a group photo. I'm going to ask some of my fellow committee members to help me read off all these names. Thank you for stepping right up, Ms. Robinson, Dean Robinson, excuse me. First, we have Ms. Suzanne Gill. Ms. Gill, I'll reach your citation for you. The Boston School Committee extends its appreciation to Suzanne Gill, a teacher at Grador Eggleston High School for renewing her National Board certification in science and adolescence and young adulthood from the National Board for professional teaching standards. The chairperson and the members of the school committee of the city of Boston join with the superintendent of schools in congratulating you for continuing to uphold excellence in your teaching practice and for the example you continue to set for your fellow educators dated this day, February 28th, 2018. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call my colleague, Mr. McClay, forward to make a special presentation.
All right, good evening. I would like to present the next citation to my teacher, Ms. Kimberly Fraser Booth. And I will read what the citation states. National Board certification in English Language Arts, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood for the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards. All right, the chairperson...all right. The chairperson and members of the school committee of the city of Boston joins with the superintendent of schools in congratulating you for continuing the upholding of excellence in teaching...teaching practices and for the example of continuing to set for your fellow educators. Sorry, so I'm calling up Wendy Welch. The National Board certification in...sorry. Oh, sorry. Wendy Welch from Excel High School for renewing. National Board certification in Exceptional Needs Specialist, Early Childhood through Young Adulthood for the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. The chairperson and members of the school committee of the city of Boston join with the superintendent of schools in congratulating you for your continuing to uphold excellence in your teaching practices and for the example you continue to set for your fellow teachers. Thank you.
I have the privilege of calling up someone from my school, the Roosevelt K-8, Sylvia Gonzalez-Powers. So, congratulations for earning the National Board certification in English as a New Language, Early and Middle Childhood from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. The chairperson and members of the school committee of the city of Boston join with the superintendent of schools in congratulating you for continuing to uphold excellence in your teaching practice and for the example I know you continue to set for your fellow educators. Congratulations. Who's up next?
Can I ask any of my fellow members to come over and join us? We'll make it through the list. Next, I'd like to call forward Margaret Alaskas. Ms. Alaskas is a teacher at the Allegheny Montessori School, and she has earned her National Board certification in English as a New Language and Early and Middle Childhood from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. Ms. Alaskas, congratulations, and thank you. Next up is Brian Luesler. All right. Mr. Luesler is a teacher at the Boston Latin Academy, and he has earned National Board certification in English Language Arts for Adolescence and Young Adulthood from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. Mr. Luesler, thank you very much, and congrats.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Christina Keller Bianchi. Bianchi or Bianchi? Congratulations. Teacher at Burke High School for earning the National Board certification in Social Studies, History, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. Congratulations. Next, Ms. Amanda Minerva. A teacher at the Lyon K-8 School for earning the National Board certification in Exceptional Needs Specialist, Early Childhood through Young Adulthood from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. Congratulations.
Ms. Carolyn Silva Sanchez. Ms. Silva Sanchez is a teacher at the Lee Academy Pilot School, and she has earned National Board certification as a generalist in early childhood from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. Ms. Silva Sanchez, thank you, and congrats. Teresa Johnson Haveloas. Ms. Johnson Haveloas is a teacher at the Curly K-8 School, and she has earned National Board certification in Literacy for Reading and Language Arts in the Early and Middle Childhood grades from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. Ms. Johnson Haveloas, thank you and congratulations.
Next up is Wing Lu. Teacher from Boston Latin School for earning your National Board certification in Mathematics, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. Congratulations. Next is Carrie O'Rourke. Carrie is a teacher at the Edison K-8 School, and you are earning your National Board certification in Literacy, Reading, Language Arts, Early and Middle Childhood from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. Next is Leslie Albee. She's not here? Leslie is a teacher at the Edison K-8 School, and she has earned the National Board certification as a generalist in early childhood from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. So, congratulations to Leslie.
Okay, we have a few others that couldn't join us this evening. First, we wanted to give a shout out to Nicole Secundi Giordani, who just had a baby earlier this week, and so she's got...she's got an excused absence. Ms. Giordani is a teacher at the Murphy K-8 School, and she's earned, for the first time, her National Board certification in English Language Arts in Early Adolescence. So, congratulations again to Ms. Giordani. And we have three other teachers from Brighton High School, Bridget Driscoll, Shabon Dooling, and Carleen Kelly Bowen, who have all also earned or renewed their National Board certification. Ms. Driscoll in English as a New Language for Early Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Ms. Dooling for renewing her National Board certification in English Language Arts, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. And Ms. Bowen for renewing her National Board certification in English Language Arts, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Congratulations to those teachers as well. Now, let's ask once more for a round of applause for our entire crowd. We can't be more proud of you and thankful for you. Standing ovation. Much appreciated. Now, we want to ask everyone, the members and the recipients, this evening, to join me on the stage for a brief photo op. And anyone else that wants to take...come up and take a picture as well, please, please do. Oh. Do you want to speak first? Why don't we...why don't we ask the superintendent to speak after we take the photo?
Just really quickly, I just want to say a few words, and I'm going to say something on behalf of Jessica Tang as well. She asked me to pass along a message. National Boards is the highest certification for a teacher, and I just want to say congratulations. It's a commitment to your own craft. It's a commitment to improving your practice, and most importantly, it's a commitment to making sure that you're raising the achievement of young people. So, congratulations to all of you. And our BTU president wants to say we are proud of all of you and want to congratulate you on your hard work and for demonstrating the standards of accomplished teaching that National Board certification represents. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Tommy Chang.
Thank you so much. Good evening, school committee. Good evening, everyone who is here this evening. Thank you for joining us. I would like to begin tonight's report by addressing the horrific Valentine's Day shooting at Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. Once again, our hearts ache as a country as we watch the news reports showing yet another school, a long sanctuary for learning in this country become the scene of a mass killing. And we grieve the loss of the seventeen victims, including fourteen students whose hopes and dreams were extinguished by this senseless act. And we were awed by the bravery of the football coach and a geography teacher who lost their lives protecting students. And once again, we ask ourselves, how do we stop this from happening? It's been suggested that we should arm teachers with guns. Last week, I took a pretty strong public stance. I said I believe the Mirathav teachers should be armed in order to ward off violence is utterly illogical and will only result in the making of our students and our teachers less safe. The real issue here really continues to be access to guns. The role of educators is to nurture, to uplift, to inspire, to teach young people, not to pack a weapon and serve it as a security guard or a SWAT officer. We must come together as a nation and find ways to make our schools safer. And that should be our primary focus. I'm encouraged today to see that the young people have returned back to school. These young people have sparked a movement that is pressuring politicians, and even this morning, a sporting goods store, to adopt stronger gun control measures. And as we all know, we're lucky to live in a state like Massachusetts where we do have strict gun laws. Here in Boston, we have a mayor and we have a police commissioner who are fighting federal proposals that threaten to move us backwards. Just this last year, we held a New England Regional Gun Summit here at the Boland Building to work with our neighboring cities and states on preventing the illegal flow of firearms into our city. And when it comes to making sure our schools are safe each and every single day, we know that our focus should be around prevention and creating a culture of inclusion for all our students. And that's why BPS has partnered with the Sandy Hook Promise. I think I've shared that in the past. We've been...we've been deep in our efforts with Start With Hello, which is an initiative that helps students connect with each other. Our Office of Social, Emotional, Learning, and Wellness provides support through our Safe and Welcoming Schools specialists. They help address issues of school...issues that may arise with school climate at schools. We collaborate closely with Boston Police and the city of Boston. Every single morning, I get a safety report. Two years ago, we created the position of Executive Director of Safety Services, and her job is to enhance safety protocols and better identify threats in our schools. And for the past three years, the Boston Police Department has conducted active shooter presentations with BPS staff and school staff on a regular basis. And we know as educational leaders, we can all play our little, small role in reducing gun violence. Our priority in Boston Public Schools, obviously, is to make sure our young people are safe and our schools are safe, welcoming, and sustaining for all our students. So, I just wanted to start this evening's remarks with some comments about that. Second thing, BPS graduation rates reach historic heights. On Monday, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education released statewide high school graduation rates for the 2016-2017 school year. And I'm proud to say that Boston Public Schools' high school graduation rates reached a historic high last school year, and it continues a decade-long increase in the number of students earning a diploma in four years. Our graduation rate now is seventy-two point seven percent. We'll round it up to seventy-three, seventy-three percent, which represents a nearly fifteen percent increase since 2016-2017. So, that's where the last ten years. The statewide graduation rates have also increased over the past ten years, but what is key here is BPS is closing the gap where our rise is actually a faster rate, helping the district close the gap with the state average by more than one-third. That gap, which in 2007 was twenty-three percent, has narrowed down to fifteen point six percent, dropping seven point five points in ten years. BPS also significantly increased graduation rates of students who earned a diploma within five years. Altogether, seventy-eight point four percent of all students who entered high school as freshmen in 2012 graduated within five years of entering high school, up from seventy-six percent the year before. So, that represents a two-point-four percent increase. Two hundred and fifty-one additional students received a diploma with that extra year. Also, in addition to improving graduation rates, BPS has also made gains in reducing its annual dropout rates, which fell district-wide by nearly one percent for 2016-2017 year. I think what is most important is some of the subgroups. Dropout rates have decreased for black students from four point nine to four point one, for white students from three point eight to two point five, for Asian students from one point two to point seven, and for Latino students from five percent to four point two percent. Overall, BPS has cut the dropout rate in half over the last ten years, lowering it from seven point nine percent in 2007 to three point six in 2007. And I want to finish off these comments about graduation rates by highlighting a few schools. One of the most impressive is East Boston High School, which continued to make impressive gains with a seven percent increase to...in its four-year graduation rates from sixty-seven point seven percent to seventy-four point seven percent in 2007. The school's rate has risen by twenty-seven point one percent over the last decade, climbing from forty-seven point six percent in 2007 to its current level of seventy-four point seven. Tech Boston saw a four-point-five percent increase, Notre International saw a nine-point-three percent increase, and Jeremiah Burke High School continued to improve its graduation rates, which increased from seventy-four percent to seventy-six point nine percent in 2007. So, for Jeremiah Burke, that is forty-five percent over the last ten years, soaring from thirty-two point three percent in 2007. We realize this is due to the hard work of young people. They deserve the primary credit for this. But I also want to thank parents. I want to thank our educators for making sure that they are helping to lift the achievement of our young people, to say congratulations to our young people and to our schools. Really quickly, before we kind of jump into bright spots, I want to mention that downstairs, right now, there is an exhibit, a mural called Paredes que hablan, so Walls That Speak. And it is a collaboration effort between eighty-seventh grade students from the Garner Pilot Academy and the Lila Frederick Pilot Middle School in Dorchester. That exhibit is a collaboration... That exhibit is a collaboration, the work is a collaboration between the nonprofit Art Resource Collaborative for Kids and the students and teachers of Garner Pilot Academy and the Frederick. And the creation of the mural, in the creation of the mural, the students considered and experimented with how the themes and topics from reading and writing in the Borders and Identity Unit could be represented in symbols. That exhibit is going to be downstairs until Friday, at a minimum Friday. Maybe we can keep it going for a little bit longer. And I encourage anybody here in the audience or watching on TV to go visit that exhibit Other bright spots. Yesterday, we had some Olympians visit the Perkins School. Students at the Michael J. Perkins Schools yesterday got a chance to meet two past Olympians. Three-time world champion Olympic track athlete, Lolo Jones, and 2012 U.S. Olympic wrestling gold medalist, Jordan Burrows, visited the South Boston School, where they exercised with students and talked about physical fitness. Principal Craig Martin explained that the school applied to host the event through the Morning Mile campaign because they saw it as an opportunity to stay healthy and use movement to energize their own learning. Principal Craig said that students thought it was amazingly cool to run together with Olympic stars who pushed them to be their own superstars. In the words of a Perkins student named Jada, "Jordan Burrows told us, 'We can do hard things, and that inspired me to try harder and to never give up.'" Principal Martin now plans to build a morning exercise into the school's routine so students can start their day off in a meaningful way. "This moment," he said, "will strengthen our scholars to work harder and press us over here regardless of life's challenges." So, great. Next bright spot. On Monday, New England Patriots wide receiver Malcolm Mitchell joined Mayor Walsh with a reading rally with students from the Blackstone Elementary and the Toman K-8, along with others, to celebrate the release of Mitchell's newly illustrated edition of Mitchell's book, The Magician's Hat. The event held at Boston Public Library as part of the Athletes Youth Literacy Initiative, Read with Malcolm, and nonprofit Share Magic Foundation hosted an event to boost reading skills and access to books for students in under-resourced communities. Children got to enjoy a magic show, ask the NFL star questions, and receive a hardback copy of The Magician's Hat. So thank you to Malcolm Mitchell and the New England Patriots. Next bright spot. SEI, which stands for Sheltered English Immersion Students. At the McCormick Middle School got a lesson on illustrating children's book from award-winning Mexican-American author, Raul Gonzalez. Gonzalez spoke in Spanish to about twenty students who are newcomers to the district, telling them about his career path and how he came to illustrate SpongeBob comics and illustrate several books of his own. The students all lit up when he did live drawings to show them the process illustration. He identified with them on a cultural level, explained McCormick literacy coach, Adina Schecter.
Schecter.
Schecter. The students got to meet a famous published author who looks like them and speaks like them. It is so important for our students to meet and interact with adults doing great work in the world, who also reflect their identities. This really engages them. And the author voted Boston's Best Visual Artist in 2010 by Readers of Boston Phoenix, gave the students signed copies of one of his books, Low Riders in Space, and posed for pictures with them. So I want to thank the author, Raul Gonzalez, and I want to thank Wonder More, which is a local nonprofit that helped bring this all together. The last bright spot is earlier this month, I joined Mayor Walsh and Chief of Staff Rob Consolville to observe the Channing Elementary School K-2 classroom in a celebration of peace, our tribute to Dr. Martin Luther King. The students sang songs such as "Sing About Martin" and "I'm On My Way," cited poems about Dr. King and peace, and read a line retelling the story of MLK's life from birth to death. They also decorated their room with peace doves they made to serve as a reminder of Dr. King's message to choose peace, love, and friendship. Denise said of the project, "We continue to use MLK as a model when we are in challenging situations with a friend." The last words of our recitation are, "We are friends, we love one another, we believe in peace." Of course, these are very powerful words to live by. This event occurred right after the shooting in Florida, and so it was such an uplifting event for me to be here. I want to thank the Mayor Walsh for also being there as well. And I have one last just reminder. I want to encourage everyone to attend the Citywide and Mass Regional Six Science Fair this Saturday, March third, at Northeastern University. Students report at eight a.m. The public viewing begins at one-thirty p.m. The science fair, which is presented by the BPS Science Department and Northeastern's Center for STEM Education, provides an opportunity for students to do science and solve engineering problems. As the students prepare for this exhibition, they not only learn important science and engineering concepts, but they learn, most importantly, how scientists and engineers investigate and make sense of the world. So we had just under three hundred outstanding exhibits showcasing nearly three hundred fifty students last year, and so we hope to have something similar this year. So that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Chang, and thank you for that reminder about the science fair. My daughters look forward to it every year. I'll open it up to my fellow members for any questions or discussion. Dean Robinson.
Thank you for your report, Dr. Chang. Two questions just regarding the safety and in response to the tragedy in Florida. And full disclosure, I know I've shared with some of you all, I was unfortunately a part of a middle school shooting when I was in middle school in Virginia. So this kind of reignites the reminder for me of why safety matters and, you know, how we work with our students and our families. So one question is just in regards to the safety strategy. I know you spoke about the executive director. Schools are probably asking, I know I've heard it from parents at various schools, how are the doors? How are the hallways? What is the exit strategy? Is there correspondence going to the homes from the principals in regards to, this is how we conduct safety checks or fire drills? So that's first question. And then the second question is just around, I know you sent a really wonderful and thoughtful letter to the district, but is there a sense of just engagement around communications to the principals and the families, just in regards to how we move forward from this type of loss that took place in Florida?
So I want to thank all our teachers and all our parents and all our administrators in our schools, who coming back from the break had to invest the time needed to make sure our young people felt safe in our schools. And so unfortunately, we've had a lot of practice with these things. And then so our teachers, again, made a lot, I heard stories and stories of teachers who made their classroom a place for solace for young people. And so the work around social, emotional support for our young people is like primary, first of all. We conduct regular safety checks in all our schools. We do what we call safe mode internal threat drills at least twice a year at every single one of our schools. The situation for each school is different, and the procedures are different. And I've been asked to comment about how we do safety, how we do active shooter drills in our school. I can't actually comment on those things publicly because it looks so different for every single school, and it's not things that we want to share. But what I can say is that we work very closely with Boston Police to conduct these sort of drills at schools. And more importantly, we do these safety checks every year at schools to make sure everything's functioning correctly. It doesn't mean everything's perfect. We have issues that we have to address, and when these issues come up, we are addressing them one-on-one, one at a time.
Okay, just a quick follow-up. So the drills, that's really necessary. Is there a look into facilities and just to see if, I don't know if principals, I know I walked into schools with fresh eyes in the last couple of days, you know, just in looking at the way, you know, some of the schools are laid out. Is there a conversation moving forward in regards to the facilities of some of the schools that may feel they have a lower risk of safety?
So yes, the facilities is part of the safety assessment at schools? Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, Dean Robinson. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Dean Robinson, thank you for bringing that up. I was in a school recently that I won't name publicly, that the front door breaks all the time, and a lot of the classroom doors don't shut. It's an older building, as we have many of them, and Facilities is aware of it and is working on it and has replaced and numbered it. And I'll talk with the superintendent afterwards, only because you brought it up as well. I also did want to mention, Superintendent, thank you for bringing up that mural that is downstairs tonight. It was incredible to happen to wander by the presentation and stop and listen to the presentation of the students, including one who told an incredible heartfelt story about her mother being deported. And I'm saying it because she told the story downstairs to everyone. And then the principal filled me in on the rest that's happened to the family. And this is something that's affecting many of our students every single day, and we always need to be cognizant of that. And in that spirit, Superintendent, I hope the district can find a home for that mural beyond what they were told of, you can have it downstairs till Friday, and that wasn't true, that's the manager of the building. But maybe there's another place that the school department controls that we can figure out how to display this, and the schools involve the Gardner and the Frederick, I believe, would love if that could happen. And lastly, I can't go without talking about the new information from the state about our graduation rate, in particular, our dropout rate. For a number of folks in the city who have been working on this for a number of years, I remember distinctly being in a presentation, I see Laura Peril in the back of the room, but I remember being with the two re-engagement specialists or the two dropout re-engagement specialists in 2006, making a presentation to the Ed Besters Board about why they should help fund the re-engagement effort, which was a new idea at the time. And at that point, there were eighteen hundred dropouts in the City of Boston. And when we presented to the board, we said, "If we cut the dropout rate in half over the next ten years, we will be a national leader, and there'll still be nine hundred kids dropping out of Boston Public Schools." And this year, we're under seven hundred. So it's the lowest we've ever had, huge cause for celebration, and yet let's not forget that means seven hundred youth dropping out of our schools. And I know there's a lot of work going on with Parthenon. I think the Reengagement Center has been critical to this effort. I think alternative ed as a secondary place for our students to go back, if they're not thriving in our large schools, is helpful as well. I look forward to the superintendent's work, continued work on this and getting that number lower. But we should stop and celebrate for a minute that this is a big deal, that more and more of our students are graduating because they need it in this economy. And if they're going to thrive in Boston in the coming years, they need not only a high school education, but they need career certification and/or college degrees as well. And they can't get that unless they're graduating from our high schools and graduating from our schools ready to succeed at those next levels. So this has been an all-hands-on-deck effort in Boston over the last ten years with Success Boston and a number of other things. But Superintendent, I wanted to make sure we stopped and celebrated that. So thank you for bringing it out tonight.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
Well, I just want to say a few other words. You know, just first remarking on Marjorie Stone Douglas. I'm a Broward County native. I knew a number of people that went to or know a number of people that are graduates of Stoneman Douglas, had a roommate in college that was a graduate of school. And so, you know, any gun tragedy, especially in a school, is hard for our community. You know, it feels sometimes like we just let this type of grief and this type of senselessness just wash over us. But, you know, I got to say that I'm taking particular inspiration from the students at Stoneman Douglas and the advocacy and the tenaciousness with which they're approaching this issue. It's newfound, and it's heartfelt, and it's serious, you know? And I think it speaks to a lot of the concerns that we have as a community today. And so I know, Dr. Chang, I'm sure you've been in touch with Superintendent Runse down in Broward County and sending our regards and our best wishes and our support, and I just wanted to do the same as well. I'd also just like to third the support for all the great gains that the district's made around its graduation and dropout rates. And something that really struck me as well is, you know, not only the very great gains, excuse me, in the four schools that Dr. Chang highlighted in his remarks, the twenty to forty-five percent gains among those four schools. But, you know, something that struck me as well is that those four schools are all open admission. You know, those are the schools where a lot of students go that are, they're general ed, and, you know, they come with a whole spectrum of outside influences and educational backgrounds when they come into those schools. And so the efforts at those four schools in particular, but of course, many of the other schools in our secondary offerings across the district that have made to get those students up to grade level and to persist towards graduation is something to be commended. And as Dr. Chang said, you know, we have much more work to do. And so we'll look forward to hearing more about, in particular, the work that the district is looking to do with our high-risk youth.
Dr. Yuriarty, I noticed that you had something else to add.
Just very briefly, I wanted to, I mean, when you mentioned Marjorie Stone Douglas, I wanted to talk a little bit about her. Being from South Florida, also, I mean, we know about her as a great activist, environmental activist, who has fought against all the, you know, and to try to preserve the Everglades has been her big thing, had been her big thing. She, I posted in Facebook, a little talk, I mean, a little quote from her, so I will repeat it here so that people know who she is, and how close the kids in that high school are to who she actually embodied in her life. This is a quote from her, "Be a nuisance where it counts. Do your part to inform and stimulate the public to join your action. Be depressed, discouraged, and disappointed at failure and the disheartening effects of ignorance, greed, corruption, and bad politics, but never give up."
And she never did?
So she's really a wonderful example of just a lifetime of struggle and, you know, for really important things in South Florida.
Thank you, Dr. Yuriarty. Indeed an inspiration, an inspiration for her namesake. Mr. O'Neill.
I'm sorry for not saying this, but I'm so inspired by what Dr. Yuriarty just read. You know, we think very hard as school committee members, how to make sure we keep our children safe in Boston. And we're talking about our schools and that type of thing, but there are other things we can do too. And companies respond to economic pressure. And so today, I called the company that manages my IRA that I have and my 401K through my company to find out if any of the mutual funds that I'm in are invested in the companies that make assault rifles. And I said, "I want out of those mutual funds." And a lot of people are starting to do this now, and you see Vanguard and Fidelity starting to think about it as well. That's why you saw Dick's Sporting Goods change and say, "We're not selling." When consumers speak up and start to change and say, "How can we, folks focused on education, allow our retirement dollars to be invested in companies that are creating these assault rifles that are killing our children?" So I did it personally, and I encourage anyone else to do it as well, because the more of us that reach out to the Fidellities and the Vanguard's and others and say, "Enough", the more we can get change. Sorry for getting on the soapbox, but I was being a nuisance, like you inspired me to be with that comment.
Well, thank you, Mr. O'Neill. If there's no further, I'm sorry, yes, Ms. Robinson.
A question about our students, now that they're back in session. What's the conversation amongst the young people around standing up, standing in support of what's going on? Because, I mean, as much as we've all been impressed by the voices of the young people in Florida, I've often been very impressed by the young people right here in Boston. Want to make sure that we're supporting them in whatever they're looking at.
Well, thank you, Ms. Robinson. We're going to ask Mr. McClay to read a statement that the Boston School Student Advisory Committee has submitted to myself and Dr. Chang today. If he's willing, of course.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
"Be seconded by the incidents and losses of lives that took place at the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. For this reason, we support any student who makes the decision to walk out..."
That's okay.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
All right.
I don't know, finish. "...to walk out on March fourteenth. We believe that this is very important for people in power to stand with students who chose to walk out on March fourteenth and advocate for their rights to feel safe in school. This would be much better and more beneficial to oppose to the, I mean, more beneficial as opposed to those in power shutting down the students and our, and are disregarding their beliefs. It is extremely important that everyone in power, not just the superintendent, support and act as one with the students, to discipline students for walking out for the cause while only discourage participation in meaningful civic action. Please keep in mind that this walkout and this reason for any young person or adult participating is imperative. This is an issue that is directly impacting young people. It could've, it could've been any of us who were killed. This walkout could result in some major positive changes, and we believe in Boston needs sustained unity. We ask that you allow students and teachers in Boston Public Schools to stand in any, in solidarity with thousands of students, teachers, families from across the country that will participate in the seventeen-minute walkout. If students then choose to leave the State House to lobby, then BPS should consider this as an early dismissal or excuse absence, but not penalize students for taking action. Please also consider providing guidance and space for conversation on how adults can support students in this process. As always, we thank you for your support and hope we will take our recommendation into consideration."
Thank you, Mr. McClay, and, um, as I mentioned earlier, this is a statement that, uh, the Boston Student Advisory Council submitted to, um, Dr. Chang and I just a little bit earlier today, and I understand that Dr. Chang is, um, um, hoping to respond to that statement sometime later this week. But I'd ask for Dr. Chang to make a few comments if he, if he wishes at this time.
Yes, um, I think we should just all be aware that this is part of a national movement that you mentioned on March fourteenth. Uh, students, teachers, and community members from all around the country are engaging in a seventeen-minute, quote, "walk out" to protest Congress's inaction to do more, um, to do more, uh, in response to gun violence. I will be providing guidance, uh, to the BPS community on Friday. Uh, we want to make sure that we are supporting student voice and advocacy, and at the same time, making sure our students are doing it in a productive way, and most importantly, they're safe. And so, uh, guidance will be coming Friday. I will be responding to you with that letter. And I ask for our teachers and our parents and our administrators to look out for that letter on Friday.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Thank you, Mr. McClay, and thank you, Ms. Robinson, for raising up student voice as always. Uh, if there's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report as submitted.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Dean Robinson and, uh, Dr. Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have one minute remaining and then thirty seconds. Those who require interpretation services will be allotted additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. We have two speakers this evening. We'll begin with Ariana Perez de Alderetti, and she'll be followed by Dolores Wood.
Good evening, Ms. Perez de Alderetti.
Hi, uh, like she said, my name's Ariana Perez de Alderetti. Uh, I have been a Boston, Massachusetts resident, actually in the North End, my whole entire life, uh, and my mother has worked in BPS. And I'm currently residing in Newton at LaSalle College, but I graduated from, uh, the O'Brien down the street. The reason why I'm here bec, is because, uh, I want to propose, uh, the ban of dissection of animals in all of BPS schools. And I'm gonna, you all received a copy of the points, the major points that I'll be covering, um, so I'll just start that. So, millions of animals every year are dissected in elementary, high school, and colleges. Cats, like, for example, cats are caught in the wild or, um, from pet stores, shelters, and off the streets. So, if you, I don't know how many people on the panel or in the audience have animals or pets, but if you have a cat and it goes missing, it's, it's likely to be on someone's dissection table, and that personally saddles me. Yes, it's very shocking. Uh, animals, uh, removed from gas chambers and injected with a chemical called formaldehyde, uh, without having their vital signs checked, which is actually a violation of the An니phobal Welfare Act. Formaldehyde is a very irritating substance that causes a painful death to the animals, and if they survive the injection, they're then drowned, continuing this painful cycle. Clotting dissection actually, uh, desensitizes students from, uh, in their thoughts on living things. Researchers have shown that a significant number of students on every educational level are uncomfortable with the idea of dissection. Studies show that, um, studies also show that, uh, exposing children to dissection as science is actually not beneficial and actually harmful to, and discourages them from purring, pursuing any career in science in the future. Ninety percent of medical schools have also, uh, abandoned the use of animals in their standard curriculum, so I don't see any reason for other schools to be doing it. The most non-animal tools, like online dissection and other resources like that, save the school, school system money, and it's actually better, it lasts long, and it's better to, um, not work in an environment that reeks of formaldehyde from the animal, which is a car, co, carcinogen, I don't know how to say, it's a big word. Um, it's actually bad to inhale, and, um, inhaling it is, uh, it's, it's known to cause types of cancer. And, uh, expressing it, um, being exposed to it for long amounts of period of time is, like I said, cancer, and which, I, I, sorry. And the ban would be beneficial because of the fact that we would, um, ultimately avoid a significant amount of lawsuits that would be on our hands, because teachers are exposed to formaldehyde for longer periods of time than students are. So, the, you know...
If you could just please wrap up, yes.
Uh, the following groups are the ones that support these statements, the National Toxicology Program, the International Agency for Research on Cancer, the Environmental Projection Agency, and the National Cancer Institute. The side effects of formaldehyde besides, you know, cancer are watery eyes, burning of the eyes, throat and nose, coughing, wheeze, wheezing, and nausea. And so, I think that this ban will be beneficial to the animals and to the school system that would ultimately be a success for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's always nice to see a, uh, BPS grad back in, in front of us again.
Does anyone have any questions? I can, if anyone?
No, we don't answer questions at this time. We only take statements. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dolores Wood.
Good evening, Ms. Wood.
Good evening. It's good to see you again. All right, I just wanted to come up, uh, and discuss a little bit about West Roxbury Academy again, because we're coming to that time of year where we are under scrutiny. Uh, I just want, uh, we have been told, officials have spoken to us privately about merging West Roxbury Academy and Urban Science Academy, and we understand the interest of the district in merging the two schools. However, in consolidating our schools, we do not want to fall victim to the office of turnaround and transformation by becoming any kind of inter, intervention, transformation, or turnaround school. There is no excuse for us to lose our leadership, or our teaching staff, or our autonomy. Uh, we don't want to lose our community. We are a successful school despite receiving a stepped-up level of challenges every year. The state and the district are not accurately measuring our success. It also appears that the district may be forgetting that the only, only the large, traditional high schools like ours can support the severely handicapped, multi-handicapped population that BPS services in-house. WRA remains a Level Three school even though half of the school's ESL one and two students are above the age of eighteen, including, I have two ESL one nineteen-year-old freshmen. In my classes, twenty-nine of my, sixty-five ESL one, two, and three students are above the age of eighteen. Nine of my eighteen ESL three students are nineteen years old and above. These eighteen and nineteen-year-old students have not been identified as students with limited or interrupted education, and therefore do not receive special accommodations, though they deserve them. Many of these students have taken or will be taking MCAS this year. All but three of these students were accepted into the district in the last year and sent on to us. So, you can see how our school population is changing. West Roxbury Academy has received more than two dozen older ESL students in the past year. Traditional high schools are being given a job that not even Boston International Newcomers Academy can handle, though their mission is ESL. These students used to be taught at Binka or by Newcomers Program before Binka became a separate school. Now that Binka is a Level One school, they are sending growing numbers of formal SLS students and undetected SLS students and sped students to other schools. A few of these adult students are taken by the Boston Adult Technical Academy, but there is a long wait. Okay, WRA's ESL students still have a ninety-five percent pass rate on English Language Arts MCAS. We work hard with these students during school, after school, and during breaks, helping them reach performance standards that are three, four, and five levels above their starting point. But here's the inequity. Imagine the challenges to WRA's MCAS scores when our science department is being asked to differentiate instruction in biology and physics, where eighteen and nineteen-year-old ESL one levels are the same, in, in the same classes with fourteen-year-old native English-speaking biology or physics students, all studying from the same texts, same with math. The WEDA standards offer us, or they, they advise us that we are to le, raise our students one level every year in order to do a good job, but we must raise them two, three, four, or five levels for them to pass these tests and to keep us away from a turnaround level, okay? Also, there's a lot, a growing number of... I'm almost, just, I'll just, just mention this. I've, I've attached some things, and you'll see them. But there's a growing number of people that are saying the turnaround process is disruptive. It isn't helping. It's kind of, we're observed almost once a month. We're observed after breaks. We're observed, um, like, during, like, during the WEDA test, we had observers in who asked why we weren't giving cognitively demanding tasks to the students who had just been given a standardized test.
Ms. Wood.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Anyway, so...
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
I would like you to look at our numbers and realize that we are excellent and doing a, a wonderful job and not, and should not be split up.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Mr. LaCanto, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our first action item on, uh, for this evening is the consent calendar, which consists of grants for approval, two grants for approval, uh, totaling ninety-one thousand dollars, and two international travel requests. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the members of the committee for questions. Ms. Robinson.
Yes, I have a question about the, um, the STAR Talk Arabic Summer Academy. Um, and my question is, I see that it's for about forty students for three weeks, and the question is, um, how does this impact the credits? Is it just a summer enrichment program, or, because it seems like there are a lot of variables about who takes it. I'm wondering what happens once they take it, and how does this impact success?
Yep, um, so for Charleston High School students...
Alex, Alex, can you just introduce yourself?
Oh, hi. Uh, my name's Alex. I'm from Charleston High School. Uh, I'm the grant manager there, and I'm the PI for this grant. Um, so for students from Charleston High School, in the three-week time period, they won't have enough instructional hours to receive credit, but they will do additional coursework at the beginning of the fall semester. Um, for students from outside of Charleston High School, it is like an enrichment opportunity.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the, uh, the membership? Hearing none, uh, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the, uh, consent calendar as presented. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the consent ta, calendar by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved. Okay, we'll move on now to our first and only report tonight, the drinking water access in the Boston Public Schools. At this time, I'd like to invite Catherine Walsh, the Sustainability and Environmental Resources Manager for the district, and PJ Preskinis, our Assistant Director of Boston Public Schools Facilities Management, to please step forward with their presentation. First, I'd like to invite, uh, Superintendent Chang to give us, uh, his opening remarks.
Thank you so much. Uh, PJ and Kate today will provide an update on steps we've taken since this school committee passed in two thousand sixteen, in June two thousand sixteen, the new BPS water policy. Um, they will provide, uh, updates on improved drinking water access, testing procedures, and communication protocols. The update will include a review of BPS's access to drinking water and details on bright spots such as our annual testing, new fountains and filters, new online schools, new assessments of all drinking water infrastructure across the district. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Good evening, BPS School Committee members and BPS community. Uh, my name is Catherine Walsh. I'm the Sustainability and Environmental Resources Manager for BPS, and I'm joined here this evening by my supervisor, PJ Preskinis, who is the Assistant Director for Facilities Management. I want to first thank you for the opportunity to present to you an update on drinking water access at Boston Public Schools since you passed the BPS water policy in June of two thousand sixteen. For tonight's presentation, I will first provide a review of access to drinking water as it relates to our schools and the BPS water policy, followed by an update on our progress since you passed the policy. I will also finish with a looking forward section so that I can share with you our plans for continuing our work on drinking water access. First and foremost, BPS provides safe and clean drinking water at all of our schools. Um, and it's important to note that this includes the schools where we found drinking water quality issues in spring of two thousand sixteen. And I will go into more detail about those specific schools later in my presentation when I talk about new online schools. The health and safety of our entire BPS community, especially the students, is our top priority. And by law, both state and federal, we work to ensure that every day, students have access to drinking water throughout the whole day as well as during meals or in any food service areas. Bottled water is provided to our schools by our vendor Ready Refresh, and our tap water is provided by Boston Water and Sewer Commission, which is an award-winning public water source whose water is in compliance with federal lead and copper action levels. Most recently, what's exciting is that Boston Water and Sewer Commission actually won the two thousand seventeen New England Best Taste Test, and they'll be representing us nationally, um, this spring. Thanks to the leadership of the BPS School Committee, uh, BPS follows a comprehensive district-wide water policy that includes environment, health, and safety requirements, annual testing, and education. In April two thousand sixteen, BPS committed to annually testing all drinking water fountains at all online schools, and this greatly exceeds state, state regulations, which requires us only to test at least two schools per year. In June of two thousand sixteen, the school committee passed an updated water policy to put a greater emphasis on drinking water access, improved testing procedures, and our communications protocols. And as part of that policy, we adopted voluntarily mass DEP's goals for lead and copper action levels as well as our testing and access for drinking water. BPS has taken a number of actions to improve drinking water access since the passage of the policy, and this progress, which I will go through in detail, is a result of a collaborative effort between BPS departments and external experts. Bright spots include bringing... Bright spots include bringing online eleven new schools for drinking tap water, distributing reusable water bottles, and also implementing new drinking water infrastructure at our schools. Since the passage of the policy, the key to our success has been a streamlined collaborative process. BPS water access is no longer being addressed in silos, but rather through cross-departmental collaboration and communication, as well as partnership with external experts, which I'll go into in the next slide. Facilities management is comprised of Building Services and Planning and Engineering. Planning and Engineering Plumbing Division is responsible for repairing, replacing, and maintaining all of our drinking water infrastructure. We also work with the alterations and repairs and electrical divisions when we're installing new fountains. Building Services provides bottled water and cups to all our schools and also works to ensure that water access is available at all our schools. The Environmental Division, which is comprised of our environmental health and safety experts, is responsible for all our annual water testing. They've also been extremely instrumental and dedicated in doing our inventory district-wide of all our drinking water infrastructure, in addition to managing the health and safety of all our school buildings. Sustainability and Environmental Resources supports the Building Services Division and manages Energy and Environmental Divisions, in addition to providing strategic planning and implementation around sustainability topics such as this one, water. The Health and Wellness Department is responsible for water policy implementation in the areas of health, education, and outreach. We work as facility management very closely with Food and Nutrition Services on all water access and testing issues related to food services and food preparation. And lastly, communications has been instrumental in supporting us in communicating aspects of the policy, as well as doing all outreach to our schools about the test results and managing the BPS water website. BPS's drinking water efforts have been evaluated, validated, and supported by a number of external experts. Many of these experts have even joined us at school site councils to meet directly with school communities who have questions or concerns. As previously mentioned, Boston Water and Sewer Commission provides our tap water. We engage with Mass DEP and U.S. EPA Region One for any questions related to testing and keeping us abreast of any new changes in federal and state regulations. We engage with EPA Region One, Boston Medical Center, and Boston Public Health Commission with regards to any health-related questions as it relates to our policy. It is very important to us that any time a parent or a school has a health-related question, that we direct them to these health experts. And lastly, EnviroTrak Consulting is the contractor that we've hired to manage our annual testing and any testing we do when we're bringing a school online. This collaborative effort has enabled us to also bring a number of schools online, eleven since the passage of the BPS policy. One in two thousand sixteen, nine in two thousand seventeen, and one thus far in two thousand eighteen. It's important to note that, again, some of the schools that we found water quality issues in spring two thousand sixteen, we have actually brought those online, and that includes another Course to College, Boston Green Academy, Lee Elementary, and the Mather. When we evaluate a school to bring online, which, by the way, turning online means we are turning on their drinking water fountains and tap water becomes their primary source of drinking water, I just want to clarify, that's what we mean by online. When evaluating a school to bring online, we consider equity, existing infrastructure, past and current test results, and costs. And it's important to note that before any drinking water fountain or source of drinking water in a school can be turned online, it must pass three consecutive tests for lead and copper action levels. Once those test results have passed, those three consecutive tests, and we're able to turn a school online, the test results and a letter are communicated home. The letter comes jointly from the principal, BPS Communications, and Facilities Management, and we also work with Communications and the school to provide that letter in multiple languages based on whatever the particular school's needs are. Lastly, any new online school gets rolled into our upcoming annual testing as well. Another bright spot related to bringing these eleven schools online is we have distributed forty-four hundred reusable water bottles across the district to, across these eleven schools to students and staff, and that's something that Mass DEP has commended us for in terms of trying to promote more drinking water. This would all not be possible without looking at our plumbing infrastructure, and so the repair and testing of existing infrastructure, as well as the installation of new infrastructure and testing that infrastructure, is what has made it possible for us to continue to bring schools online for tap water. New infrastructure includes things like new filtered water fountains, bottle refill stations, and external filter boxes, which in spring of two thousand sixteen, we had not yet been able to use those filter boxes, and so that's been a new thing that has greatly helped us. These filters have proven to reduce lead levels, and I think the Mather is a great example. The Mather was a school that had elevated lead action levels. Thanks to the new infrastructure and the work that we've done, their levels came back at the undetectable range, below our method of detection, which is point five parts per billion. The lead action level is fifteen parts per billion. In terms of new infrastructure, we've installed forty-five new fountains and twenty-five new filter boxes at these new online schools. And this slide contains a photograph of an example of our new infrastructure. On the left, you'll see a bottle refill station, as well as a standard drinking water spigot. To the right is a standard drinking water fountain. This is ADA compliant technology that we're using, and then to the right of that is an external filter box. Both the bottle refill station and the filter box have indicator lights that notify us when we need to change the filters. So that's another piece that we're trying to stay on top of to make safe, clean water available. In addition to the aforementioned bright spots, BPS has made excellent progress in the following areas as it relates to the water policy. As previously mentioned, since April two thousand sixteen, BPS annually tests all online schools and posts these results to the BPS water website. For example, the two thousand seventeen results are available and posted there. Again, this greatly exceeds state regulations. We have assessed all of our drinking water infrastructure across the district, including bottled water coolers. We now track, analyze, and manage all of this infrastructure in order to assist with access, maintenance, and testing. This also, this inventory also tracks all of our new infrastructure, and that greatly assists us with planning for any future capital work and the maintenance of any new infrastructure. With regards to new efforts around bottled water coolers, this fall, we initiated a professional cleaning contract with our vendor Ready Refresh, and we've been going from school to school to clean and sanitize all of our bottled water coolers. We have also updated all of our communications materials to make our communications more accessible, especially the test results, where we wanted to be able to see what infrastructure we changes we have made in relation to those test results. In terms of looking forward, BPS will continue to collaboratively plan, assess, and communicate our progress on drinking water access. In terms of our upcoming actions, annual water testing will commence in June of two thousand eighteen, and per our policy, all of those test results will be posted online at the BPS water, excuse me, water website, and they will also be sent directly home to the school communities who are being tested at their schools. BPS will also continue to safely bring schools online, and we are currently evaluating two schools for that process. We have also developed with Acuity an actual digitized water infrastructure tracker and inventory. This, it's basically BPS-centric, but it's going to allow us to barcode every single drinking water source in our district and associate with that barcode the testing, the test results, the testing plan, any maintenance and operations we have to do with that particular fountain. Lastly, we will continue to work with capital planning in alignment with the Build BPS planning process so that we can continue to improve drinking water access. A great example of success there is the new Dearborn Building and the new Boston Arts Academy Building. Both of those, we have already incorporated new drinking water infrastructure and bottle refill stations into the design plans and construction. I would like to mention that we absolutely will continue to update the BPS School Committee on our progress as we carry out the water policy, and I really thank you for your attention and commitment to this issue.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Walsh, excuse me, and Mr. Preskinis. Really appreciate, you know, the work that you've done over, I think it's about twenty months since we first passed the policy, and the presentation here tonight is evident of all that hard work, and so we thank you for that. I'll open it up now to the committee for questions and comments. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, first of all, congratulations. This was such a huge issue two years ago. Superintendent, I think you had just joined us when it, when the water hit the wall, so to speak. So thank you for your hard work on this. This is truly a national-leading policy. As you know, you must hear from a lot of districts along the country, around the country, because I did and we did, about, wow, let's follow your policy. Can you share with us your policy? So the fact that you're following it so closely is wonderful. Couple of quick questions for you. One, you brought eleven schools on board, and that's great. Talk to me about the restrooms and the kitchens as well, because this is about putting drinking water in the fountains, right? But how about the restrooms, the hand washing, and the kitchens?
Sure. So we address medical service and food preparation areas as well, in addition to the drinking water fountains, and so we include those three aspects as drinking water fountains. At this time, we haven't been addressing these sinks as drinking water sources, and we do have very clear signage in all those places that they're for hand washing only. I think that would be something we could evaluate as we work with capital planning and the Build BPS long-term planning process, but we'd have to get back to you on anything beyond that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, did you need to get a waiver from the state or from the EPA to use the filters right at the fountains instead of, so that way you didn't have to replace the piping all the way back, right? Am I correct in that memory, or, because you showed the picture of the external filter was right there.
I would have to get back to you on the waiver. I do know that the filters themselves, the fountains that we're using and the filtered boxes, those are pretty much standard best practice on the market. They're something that most entities are using, without any kind of special permissions or waivers needed. It's just the best product that's available on the market.
Yeah, John, actually, it was even, I think it was before John Hanlon's time with the district, but I think that was an issue at the time that we weren't able to use filters because we were considered, that made us a commercial producer of water or something like that.
We're not aware of that.
Yeah.
There was a restriction on it, but I'm glad we're able to do it, and maybe ultimately these filters could move to the food prep areas, et cetera, if they're working so successfully.
We are using them in a few areas within our food prep, again, because of any evaluation and testing we've done. If we find any issues, that's when we use new infrastructure such as the filters.
And thanks, last question for me. How many schools are still offline?
About ninety-eight.
Ninety, that many still?
We have thirty-four online.
Thirty-four online, so we still have quite a ways to go. And the plan for this coming year is, for this year we're in right now is just one? Do we know how many we're trying to get online next year?
It will, we're, right now, we're evaluating two, and we'll continue to kind of, as we go, work with capital planning to evaluate. So I wouldn't want to promise only one. We're working with planning to keep chipping away at this.
Okay, we need to really step that up, but eleven at a time, we're talking ten-plus years to get them all back. And I know how hard it is for our students to deal with water bottles, and it's fine this time of year, but come May and June, I know how hard it is for facilities to make sure that all the schools between the bubblers and the, or the, whatever they're called now, the big water bottles plus these, it's a lot of work, and the faster we can get more back online would be great. But thank you for your hard work on this. This is national-leading policy, but it's critical for our students, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Dr. Yuriarte.
Thank you very much for, for the report. I did ask you over, I think yesterday, to give me a list of the schools that were in the original list and the outcomes. I don't see that here. There were a lot more than just four. So if you could give us, give us that, because I think, you know, neither one of you were here when this was a big, big deal. We had a lot of people, parents coming in, we had teachers that were pregnant that were taking water with lead. I mean, you know, this was a very big issue, so I want to make sure that we're real clear on what's happened with those schools that were in so much trouble just about eighteen months ago. So, I mean, I, you told me that you had done it, so if you have the data.
I can readdress that.
Give it, give it to us now, or if not, just send it to us. But I think it's something that the public should know about. This is, should not be swept under the rug under any circumstances.
Absolutely.
This was a safety issue, big safety issue for a lot of people.
So there were, from our knowledge, six schools in particular that were addressed in spring two thousand sixteen, and four of those we've brought online, and those were the Mather, BGA, ACC, and Lee Elementary. The other two were the Trotter and the Curly. The Trotter is one of the two schools we're currently evaluating, and we have the Curly as part of the capital planning with Build BPS process.
There were a lot more. There were a lot more. I saw the list today, I think it's in April sixteen. I mean, I remember off the top of my head the teacher from Hernanda School, and you did not mention Hernanda. So there, there were around twelve schools in that list, so if you could give us that list and the outcomes, how many of those, you know, now have safe water, and how many, you know, and what are you doing about the ones that do not?
Dr. Yuriarte, we'll get that list to you.
But I, you know, it was supposed to be here today for this presentation. Yes?
Any other questions, Dr. Yuriarte?
No, I mean, I, I just want people to know that this was, I mean, those of you that weren't here, this was a very big deal.
Yes.
This was a very big deal.
Ms. Walsh, what could you?
When we come to the public with this, we have to be very accountable about what happened, because we told them that because of this policy, it would be solved. See, we don't, you know, you're doing great work, but it doesn't address the fact that there were kids that were drinking leaded water.
Dr. Yuriarte, maybe we can ask Ms. Walsh and Mr. Preskinis to talk a little bit about the alternatives that the, the district has taken over this time to provide bottled water and other implements. Yes, well, I, I think that's part of the, the response, so that might be something we need to be refreshed on as to how we're dealing with these other, what is it, ninety-eight schools?
Let me go first. Just, and even though we weren't here, we know how serious this was, and, and I think our actions over the last eighteen months or so have shown that. We want to get this right, and, and we're very proud of, I think especially the, within facilities and in conjunction with our outside partners, that we have a very open, cross-functional process where all the different departments are involved in assessing as we're deciding which schools are to turn back online. And as Catherine mentioned, they, they have to do with existing infrastructure, existing infrastructure, past and current great results, and cost as well. And in these conversations, there's a lot of open and honest disagreement going on to make sure the decision is done right. So just to, to make sure that, you know, we take this very, very seriously, and there's a, there is no working in silos as a group, again, including our outside partners, that we're working together on this as well.
I mean, I'm, I'm very glad you're all working together. It is a way to get to the, to the other side on this, but I think we owe the public, you know, an understanding of where things are at. an understanding of where things are at. I think, for example, you know, when Mr. O'Neil mentioned two important things, kids fill up their water bottles in the sink. So that was an issue that came up at that time, and you're still, you know, that's still an issue. And secondly, 10, you know, 10 a year is going to take a long time when none of us are going to be here. So, you know, that, you know, I think, you know, if you have kids, if you had kids in these schools, I think you would be worried about the kind of water that they're drinking.
Thank you, Dr. Yuriarte. Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing back to Dr. Yuriarte, because he was saying, you know, we need to be transparent on this. And I just want to correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of the state policy was we were supposed to test about five school buildings per year. And in fact, we are testing every single building, every single year, and we are posting it online.
Good.
So you can go, if you're interested in the Hernandez, you can go to bpsbostonpublicschools.org/water and look up the Hernandez and read the report. So every parent can look at any school, and so when you're talking about transparency, I think the district is being very transparent compared to what it was a few years ago when we weren't-
I agree with you.
We're now testing every school, and we're posting it. And I think that's a huge step forward. And I also would assume, and yes, I did bring up about, you know, the water fountain, the hand washing, I would assume at this point that there has been a great deal of education in the schools to the students of, you're not filling up your water bottles in the restroom. We got, you know, we have a system for you, but I agree with you completely, and as I said it as well, I think we need to do more faster.
Yeah, I am talking about the report that is coming to us about this policy. I don't expect that each of us is going to go to 100 schools and read the reports. If people are coming before us with a report on the effect of the water policy, I think the expectation is that that information would be here.
I was just referring to, I thought you were saying, we should be transparent as possible for our parents, and so I wanted to make sure that folks know that, in fact, we're testing every school every year, which is so far in advance of what the state wanted us to do.
We're joined by Chief Operating Officer John Hanlon. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing the team to present tonight on the good work that we've done in this area over the last two years. I do have the luxury of being around a little bit longer than PJ and Catherine, who I want to salute again for doing a tremendous job in this area to alleviate a lot of major concerns, valid concerns from a couple of years ago. Their leadership has been unparalleled in this area. The state, the nation, is watching us. To answer Mr. O'Neil's question before, our work with filters has been so advanced that the state has been working with us to help the state set best practice in this area and has been totally impressed with the work that our filters have been able to do to make sure that lead amounts, copper amounts are at the undetectable range after testing. But I dug up a presentation that we have done with school committee about a year and a half ago to report back on the data that Ms. Yuriarte was asking for. The 16 schools which came up during the spring and summer of 2016 were Boston Green Academy, the Curly, the Lee Elementary, the Mather, the Trotter, Boston Latin Academy, the Hernandez, the Kenny, the Murphy, Boston Latin School, the Burke in Dearborn, Lee Academy, the Linden, the Quincy Elementary, and the Winship. Of those 16 schools, I believe four of them have been turned online, is that correct?
More based on that list.
More out of those 16 have been turned on.
Winship, Boston Latin School.
That's the information that I was looking for.
Right, so, and I apologize, we felt that you were looking just for those that had been turned online, that were part of that group back then, but more out of these 16 are part of the list of 11 that have been turned online. In other words, once we turn a school offline because of an elevated result, that school tends to rise toward the top of making sure that we do whatever we can through filtering, testing, what have you, to make sure that that school comes back online sooner rather than later. But of those 16, several were turned back online. What we'll do is send a concise list to the school committee so you have all of that broken out. And the last thing that I would say here is, as Catherine mentioned, we are continuing to work on this. I agree, one is not enough, Mr. O'Neil mentioned that. The reality is in some of our schools, the infrastructure is so poor from the facility being so old, that it requires major investment through Build BPS, which is what Catherine was referring to in terms of working with our capital planning team to make sure that we can do these investments the right way at schools that simply have inadequate infrastructure for this type of work. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. I just want to, if there's no further questions from the committee or comments, I just want to thank you and commend you once again. My fellow colleagues here have asked many of the questions I had, and it's great to hear, you know, particularly the work that you've highlighted in your presentation and answered through the questions tonight around the work that we've been able to do around filters, using that type of technology to further the water filtration that we have in our schools. The scanning, I don't think we should give any short shrift to that work as well, just being able to keep such a gargantuan project in order as we try to figure out our solutions and get these schools back online. I think it's to be commended as well, taking on this project in such a meaningful and organized way. And again, you know, we want these schools to be back online, but we understand that there are constraints, and we understand there's a cost, and there's a number of longstanding infrastructure issues that are standing in our way. So we appreciate your continuing work. We know your work is ongoing, and we'll be here to continue to support you in that work. So if there's nothing else, we'll thank you once again for your presentation, and we'll look forward to hearing from you again sometime in the near future. Well, that's the conclusion of our reports for the evening. We'll move on to public comment on reports.
Mr. Licondo, we have no speakers. Say that again, we have no speakers for general public comment.
Incredible, Ms. Sullivan. New business, fellow members. Dr. Yuriarte. Dr. Yuriarte, please.
I was a bit disturbed by the response to Mr. McClay's reading the letter, and I just want to make sure that Boston students know that there are people that really support what they're trying to do. There's, you know, institutions sometimes have a very difficult way or difficulty with dealing with activism, and I just want to make sure that you know that there are people I personally support you wholeheartedly in what you're trying to do. That's my new business.
Thank you, Dr. Yuriarte. Is there any other new business?
Well, that concludes our business for the evening. Our second and, second in a series of FY19 budget hearings will take place next Tuesday, March 6, at the English High School in Jamaica Plain at 6:00 PM. All are welcome. On Wednesday, March 14, the school committee will hold another, our third budget hearing of the season at 5:00 PM, followed by a regular school committee meeting at 6:00 PM in these chambers. Those events will take place again on Wednesday, March 14. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I want to call out, this is a historical moment, 7:40.
Let me finish it first. Looks like it's unanimous consent. Good night.